Good morning, I'm Kaitlin with Wiregrass Daily News and I'm here with Mr. JT Carroll, who is running for school board District Five. Good morning.
Good morning, Kaitlin. Thank you for, uh, thank you for having me on this morning.
Thank you for coming. So, uh, just a few questions. Uh, first is, what is your vision for Dothan City Schools in the next five to 10 years?
Yeah, it's a great question. Um, and I think it's, you know, it's really an important question for, for anyone who's, who's trying to take this position. Cause you know, you should be focused on the long term and not the short-term things that are going on here now and, and all those different things. And in the long term, I would like to see Dothan City Schools as, you know, the preeminent education option for parents in the city of Dothan and in the surrounding areas, meaning when they have a choice of the dozens of private schools that are out there, county school options, um, and the pub- and the public school option here in Dothan City, that they say, my kids are going to Dothan City Schools. That's where I'm gonna put them in. Um, and so there's a lot of things that go into that vision and we're not there right now. And so it's not a, you know, you can't flip a switch and anyone who tells you that they can is, is not being truthful. And there's a lot of hard work and effort that would go into that, but that, that's where I think we can get, um, if we all move in the same direction.
How do you plan to ensure that all students receive a high-quality education regardless of their background?
Yeah, so you know, one of the driving forces, um, yeah, I have two little girls, uh, who are gonna grow up in this system. And that's one of the reasons that, that, um, you know, one of the major reasons why I'm running, um, is, you know, with that personal investment. But I think another reason is, you know, I was in the Marines and I spent five years as a Marine military officer and, um, served with, you know, young warriors, all different backgrounds, uh, you know, inner-city Chicago, middle-of-nowhere towns and a- across the south, uh, you know, coastal suburbs, I mean, you name it, all over the place. And, uh, what I learned is, you know, I don't think people have value, I know they have value. And, um, that's, that's everybody. And they've, they've got more than you think and more than you want to give them at face value. And so, you know, our children here in Dothan, they're valued and they have value. And we're gonna give them those opportunities, um, that they need. And so from a school board perspective, like, you know, I think for a long time in the city of Dothan, you know, you had, when you, when you had two high schools, you, you functionally had two separate school systems, right? If you represented one district, you know, most of your kids matriculated through one pathway and if you represented another district, they matriculated through another pathway. The reality is now, you know, we've got one high school, we've got, um, one middle school, we've got one ninth-grade academy. We've still got a few different elementary schools, um, which is to be expected, but you know, our kids are in a lot of the same schools. And so, you know, we're, we should be folk, we have to be focused on those opportunities for, for, for all of the students and not just a particular area or a particular neighborhood. Um, and so, you know, uh, as a board member myself, or as a board member, you know, if I, if I'm elected, I'm gonna serve the city of Dothan. I'm not serving just District Five, although those are my constituents and, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna give them my, my voice in my ear, but my efforts are gonna expand beyond that.
What do you believe are the most important issues facing Dothan City Schools and how do you plan to address them?
Yeah, well, you know, there, there's a number of kind of what I would consider tactical or operational kind of challenges. Okay, so there's teacher retention, um, you know, there's some discipline concerns. Um, you know, in some cases, there's probably some leadership concerns in, in, in different places. Um, you know, I think there's, there's concerns on the footprint of the school system and whether it is, you know, supportive of the way and, and, and the areas where the city is growing. I think there's, you know, a number of different challenges along that. But the biggest one is the lack of trust. It all feeds back into that. You know, we've, we've, we've got to get to a place in the city where, you know, parents trust the system, uh, students can trust the system, teachers trust the system and, uh, business leaders. But the, the, the business community and just community organizations in general trust and are willing to work with the system. And the system is willing to work with them. You know, that, that's a key piece of it is you've gotta build a relationship there where you feel like, you know, one group can talk to another group and there's no hard feelings, there's no accusations, there's no, you know, kind of preconceived notions. You're coming to the table and saying, how can we best support these kids? How can we best support these teachers? Um, and you really do it in a collaborative way like that, but you know, we've, you know, trust is not easy to get back. You know, on- once you lose it, it's tough to get back. And there's been a lot of decisions over the last few years that have eroded that trust. And so, you know, in some cases, a- as, as a board member and as a, and, uh, you know, a- as a board member, we would, we, we need to be willing to say, hey, we made a mistake here, or hey, we underestimated this and here's what we're going to do. So you've got to, you know, you've gotta tell the community why you're taking, why you're making decisions. Um, you've gotta be open and honest and transparent about it, about why you're doing it and how you're gonna ensure that it's successful. So it starts there.
How do you plan to support students who are at risk or face challenges such as learning disabilities, poverty, or language barriers?
Yeah, i- i- it's a good question. And, and, and the reality is, you know, we have, we have a lot of kids in our system that would, that would meet those descriptions. And so, um, you know, we can't, we can't do anything without supporting them if we're gonna grow the system. Um, and, you know, we're gonna continue to pour resources i- 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 into the right things in terms of taking very, taking care of disadvantaged kids. And I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to attend the, um, the Whole Child Initiative, um, kind of community meeting that they kicked off. It's really only been in Dothan for about a year and it's a, you know, it's a multi-year kind of project. And they've had success with it elsewhere, um, in the city of Tuscaloosa and then Tacoma, Washington. Um, so it's a very, it's a very ambitious program, but at its core level, it's all about making students feel valued in the school. So beyond academics, although, you know, academics becomes a piece of the program as you kind of move along. But at its core, it's about making those kids feel like they're valued and taken care of and supported. And that starts at the school level and then it builds to the community level. So you talk about, you know, building relationships with businesses and buil- building relationships with nonprofits and building relationships with churches. You know, I'm a church member myself and our church and a lot of churches in this area are more than willing to, to kind of put their feet to the ground to help out kids in our school system. But we've gotta build that tie-in between the system and them better so that we can align our efforts to say, hey, this is something that we're really struggling with. Can we get these four or five churches, nonprofits to really help us focus on this and really help us kind of pinpoint this single thing that we need to work on and get us all moving in the same direction?
How will you promote diversity and inclusion within the school system?
Yeah, so we, we have, you know, the city of Dothan's a diverse city and, and the, the city school system is a diverse city. I think one of the challenges we have right now, quite honestly, um, to some extent is that in some ways, our school system doesn't look like our city. And we need it to be able to look like our city. And so part of that is, we've gotta make it more competitive. We've gotta make it more competitive with other options that parents are choosing. Um, and look, there, there, there's a realistic limit to it. Like, you know, we're not gonna be able to go and, and, and get all these kids out of private schools. And, and a lot of parents have deeply held reasons for, for the, the education decisions they make for their kids. And they, they deserve that. They deserve to have that choice, right? But we've gotta be able to tell them, you know, with a straight face and honesty that, hey, if you send your kid to Dothan City Schools, we're gonna take care of them. We're gonna make sure they're safe. We're gonna give them the opportunities that they need and we're gonna let them go on and be successful. Um, and it, you know, if you can tell them those things, then you're gonna be able to compete. Your school system's gonna continue to be more, more diverse because, um, and inclusive because people are gonna feel like, hey, I can send my kid to Dothan and they're gonna be valued.
How do you plan to improve student achievement, especially in areas where performance may be lagging?
You know, I think thi- this, this is a good question. I think one of the things, you know, and I've, I've, I've had conversations with a lot of different teachers and administrators about this. Um, you know, and, and candid conversations. And I think one of the things that, that, one of the things I've heard and one of the things I've picked up on is, you know, we, we need to do a better job of, uh, you know, sharing best practices and lessons learned. Because the reality is that we have a lot of schools that are doing really well. You know, we've had some great successes in some areas and then we have some schools that aren't doing so well. And so, a- a- and, and to be frank, from a board member perspective, like, you know, this is one of the key aspects of that superintendent-school board relationship is the superintendent kind of is able to prioritize, you know, these, these academic um, kind of initiatives and programs and phases and the way that he wants to structure it. And then you build a collaboration with the school board to say, hey, let's make a tweak here, you know, let's, let's do this, let's check this, let's make sure it makes sense. Let's get feedback from our community that they like this, that it makes sense. But once you have that plan, you know, then you can really go and say, hey, these things are working in this school. There's a reason why. School A has, has some good things going on. Can we do that at School B? Can we do some of those things? You know, a- and it starts, a- and I think some of that comes from, you know, um, maybe, you know, kind of a lack of willingness to kind of share those best practices or to kind of, you know, be able to say, hey, we need help here. But we gotta put that stuff aside. I mean, we're all on the same team, you know, we're not competing against one another. We're trying to make kids have the best outcomes that they can. Trying to make teachers have the best, uh, you know, work-life balance and relationship with their schools that they can. And so when those two things are most important, the rest of it goes away. And you have those conversations and you make those things happen and you build those connections and you say, School B, we're gonna do, we're gonna do some of those things that School A is doing because they're working.
What strategies will you implement to ensure that students are adequately paired for post-secondary education or the workforce?
Well, one of the bright spots in our system is Dothan Tech out at the high school, which is the, 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 uh, the kind of vocational program, uh, vocational academy that's, that's a part of Dothan High School. I mean, it has been awesome, uh, and it has done a great job over the last few years. And I think it's a great example of pulling resources and talent into an area and saying, hey, we can build a competitive advantage here. Because if you, if you look at Dothan Tech, there's nowhere else in the area that offers something like that. There's just not. That's a competitive advantage. That is something that puts us ahead. And so we've gotta continue to sustain that program. To continue to make sure that, that the, the teachers and administrators there have the resources that they need, they have the access to the talent that they need. Um, and that they have, you know, that we support them in building those, cause it, cause a key component of that, of those programs is having kind of the business community tie-in. And so we gotta make sure we're supporting that to say, hey, what do you need? What do you, what do you need to go, go make this program better than it already is? There's a lot of success that's happening there now. It's a very positive thing for our system.
How do you plan to support teachers in the classroom?
It's a good question. You talk about, I mean, te- teacher retention's a, a, a key challenge. Uh, there's, there's no question about it. And, you know, we have got to make a concerted effort to make our teachers know, to have our teachers know that they are being supported. And so, look, pay, pay's a part of that, okay? Anyone who tells you that it's not, or there's a lot of other things, like, that's just, that's, that's totally natural. And so, you know, if there are areas where we can, you know, look at our budget to say, hey, let's, let's, let's make some things happen so that teachers aren't having to come out of pocket for school supplies. I mean, which is, which is quite honestly mind-boggling to me, um, that, that we, we, you know, we allow that to happen. And that, that's not a community-specific thing. I mean, there's a lot of teachers around the country that have to do the same, but you know, it's, it's very frustrating to see that, that, that kind of be the case. Um, but the other thing is we gotta support our teachers. And I'll, I'll give an example of, you know, one of the pieces of feedback that I've heard a number of different times is, you know, when you talk about, uh, student discipline issues and challenges, okay? So, you know, a child, child needs to be disciplined in the classroom, the teacher, you know, the teacher disciplines the child or makes a recommendation and maybe even the school disciplines the child. Well, you know, pa- a- as a parent, like, I'm always gonna support my kid, you know, like, that's just part of it. I'm always, al- always gonna be, always gonna be in my, in, in my kid's corner. Like, that's just, that's part of being a parent. You know, you're gonna be there, you're gonna be their number-one fan. And, um, and so when that happens, you know, the parent gets, gets upset about it and the parent may go to central office with it, or the parent may go to, you know, some, some higher level in the system. And, um, you know, maybe there's some concessions made or some compromise made. Well, that teacher feels unsupported. They don't feel like they've been supported through that. And, you know, if you think about it, like, our teachers do an incredible job and it is a demanding job, like, period. It just is at its core. And one of the component, one of the key pieces of that is that it also is their workplace. Like, their school is their workplace and Dothan City Schools is their employer. And if you think about scenarios where you feel like your employer doesn't have your back, what are you gonna do? You're gonna say, well, I'm gonna go look at every other option I have available. I'm gonna go look at that private school. I'm gonna return their call. I'm gonna go look at that county school. Um, and if we're not, you know, if we're, if, if we're not making them feel supported in that, in that way, then we can't expect them to stay around. Um, and so it, it, it starts with that. And that is, you know, that's something that has to be done at the school level. That's something that has to be done at the, uh, system level. And it's something that has to be done at the community level. You know, I was a part of a, um, a nonprofit in the city of Athens, um, when I was a graduate student at the University of Georgia called the Foundation for Excellence in Public Education. And, um, you know, one of the great pieces of, of that program is a ton of community support. And so the way it worked is, you know, teachers could say, hey, I've got this project, this out-of-the-box project that I really wanna do. And they would go and they would write an application, um, for, to, to be able to get money from, from the, uh, from the foundation to go do that project. And so, you know, we would review, uh, fifty to sixty to seventy to eighty of these things, these applications of all these great projects, you know, and we were able to go give them that $3,000 so that they could go do that project. And that was because, you know, we had a, an entity that was solely focused on supporting our school system and solely focused on bringing in all those resources that could kind of funnel it in there. And so I think that's, you know, eh, eh, hopefully that is something that we can continue to see built in our community. You know, we do have some things that do that, um, but it's just another layer that's kind of outside of the system that says, hey, teachers, you're seen, you're heard, you're gonna be supported. We're gonna be standing beside you. Um, so there, there, there's a lot that goes into it, but, you know, that will be a key function, that will be a key focus, um, of my service on the board and should be a key focus of anyone running.
How will you advocate for additional funding or resources for Dothan City Schools, especially in the face of financial challenges?
Yeah, I mean, look, he- he- here's the reality. We had the, the Choice Act passed in the state of Alabama, um, about a year ago. And so we have not seen the cons- the full consequences of that, okay? So the, w- with, with kind of the, the funding that is going to be made available for parents to send their kids to alternative options than public schools. Um, you know, my understanding of that program, and I could be off by a year or two, but I know that there's, there's kind of an income threshold for the first year or two of the program. So, um, you know, going out until 2026 or 2027. And then after that, there's no, there's no, there's no cap. So any, you know, any child, um, or any family is gonna be able to go get those dollars. And, um, we're gonna have to compete. Like, that, that's why, you know, I, I, in the majority of the conversations I have, I say, compete, compete, compete. You know, I grew up playing sports, was in the Marines, like, I love to compete. And that's what we gotta do. We've got to, we can't always just say, hey, we need more funding. We've gotta be able to say, hey, we're gonna do thi- we're already doing this. We're going to do this if you give us this money. That's what it starts with. It's not just, hey, we need more. It's, hey, look what we're showing you. Look what we're going to do and you can trust us because look what we already did, right? We already did this. Um, and so, you know, then I think that will be able to give us more access and not just from a state level and a, and not just from a grant level either, although that is a, a key piece of it. Um, but not just from that level, but talking about getting money in for, from the community. Let me give a con- let me give like a very, a, a very simple example again, because I'm a sports guy. High school wants to build a new facility, right? Um, and there's, you know, there's some dollars from the system that we can push over to that program and, 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 and support it. Man, wouldn't it be great if some of that funding came from other parts of the community? It'd be awesome, you know? What if some of that was sponsored by certain, uh, you know, businesses and institutions or they're willing to chip in some money? But, uh, or, or what if we wanna add a new classroom wing in some area or add a new program that's, you know, specifically for some academic piece? I mean, there's a lot of different applications to that that we can, you can kind of, um, peel that together. But those things happen in other communities because they all work as one. They're all united. They trust the system. They know that it's gonna deliver.
What are your plans for ensuring the safety and wellbeing of all students and staff within the school?
Yeah, I mean, say, you know, y- you talk to parents, it's gonna be one of the first things they mention. Talk to parents who aren't in the system, it's gonna be one of the first things they mention. You're gonna talk about the safety in this one, the schools. And so it starts with that. I will say that I'm very encouraged by, um, you know, some of the things I've read about the, the safety track record of the, uh, the incoming superintendent and, uh, kind of fitting with what his responsibilities were in Athens. You know, those things, those things are really important. I mean, you know, at the, at the highest level, like, if you don't have that safety and security in the schools, like, you can't expect kids to learn, can't expect teachers to be at their best. You can't expect anyone to be at the best. And so we gotta continue to do that. Um, you know, we, we, there have been investments made over the last few, um, last few years in getting some of those metal detectors and different things that, that just provide like a core level of safety, right, within the schools. Um, you know, I think we've, we've had phones installed in all the classrooms at this point. I heard that at the recent board meeting. There's a lot of things that are happening in, uh, you know, kind of to make the schools safe. But at a, you know, more, i- i- if you pull away from just the, the technological side of it, it's about, hey, we have a code of conduct, let's stick to it, let's enforce it rigidly. Let's support a- from a system level, let's support those, those teachers and those administrators when they are enforcing the code of conduct. Um, because they're on the ground, they know these kids, they see it every day. And they know that, you know, they're gonna be able to pick up when those things are, are at a tipping point or have the potential to get there. And so we really gotta put that trust in them and then back them up when they make those decisions.
How do you plan to address bullying and create a positive school climate?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's, there's a, there's a lot of pieces that, that go into it. I mean, one thing I would say is, you know, when, when parents and, and, um, you know, people in the community are, are trying to bully one another, like, that's a terrible example. Just quite honestly, um, you know, I think we've had, uh, just, just to be, just to be totally candid on air. I mean, if you kind of look at the way that, that the board, um, has interacted and it's gone on both sides. Uh, just to be totally clear, it's going on both sides of kind of the divide that we have. But, you know, when we have that type of disagreements and the inability to work together, which is something that I, 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 I just, I won't be a part of that, right? Like, I, I've, I've been on so many teams in my life and I just, I don't allow that to happen. Like, I feel comfortable that I can build a relationship with most people, that I can get in a room with them and tell them how I feel and they may disagree and they may disagree earnestly and we may have an argument about it. But hey, look, we're gonna come to an agreement and we're gonna walk out of here and I'm gonna be supportive of it, even if it's not the thing that I wanted to do. And, um, you know, when you have that kind of bullying atmosphere at like, at that level, man, that bleeds down. You know, it bleeds down in the schools, bleeds down in the kids. You know, they feel like they can, they can do all those things. But if you look at it, um, you know, I did have the opportunity to be a part of the strategic planning committee, um, for the board. And it, you know, with a new superintendent change, whether that was totally valuable was kind of up for debate. But, um, you know, one of the key things was as, we did a community-wide survey. And, um, you know, so we, we got, there were like 6,000 responses from students, from teachers, from, um, you know, central office employees, from community members, from parents. I mean, it was, it was a very, very well-done survey and that's, that's a great, you know, kind of response rate. And the thing that you picked up on is, we're really good about picking up bullying in the elementary schools. Like, we do a pretty nice, pretty nice job of that. Um, but it kind of gets less so as you move into middle and high school. And so, you know, some of that is kids just kind of are at a developmental stage where they're more prone to bullying, um, and, and different things. And, um, you know, it's, it, it's something that we, we can't stand for. We have to be stringent and rigid about that as part of our code of conduct and we have to enforce it. But we also have to have a system climate and a school climate that makes it where, if you're, if you're, i- i- if there's bullying going on, like, man, we don't want that here. You know, like, that, that's not who we are. Um, and so we've, we've, we've really gotta build that. But we'll continue to, uh, you know, continue to do all the things that, that, that are at the core of, um, you know, making kids feel, feel like, hey, you're valued in here. And even if you have a bad day, even if someone says something to you that, that, that hurts you, like, you know, I still care. We still care about you. And, uh, and, and, and you're gonna be okay.
How do you plan to engage parents and the local community in the educational process?
Well, here's, here's another finding from that survey. If you were to take the, the survey, uh, results, without question, the biggest area of, um, you know, the biggest area of deficiency in those survey results was communication between parents in the school, in the community, in the system. Like, without a doubt. I mean, i- i- if, you know, I, I'm gonna get some numbers wrong here, but like, let's just say it's on, it was on a scale like one to 10. Like, the, these, these rates were in like the twos and the threes. I mean, I mean, very, very low. Like, there's your, there's the challenge, right? We've gotta, we're, we're, parents don't feel like they're a part of the schools, parents don't feel like they're a part of the system, and the community doesn't feel like they're a part of the system. And so for me as a board member, like, I will be in the schools. I'm not gonna do it to the extent to, to try and, I'm not going in there to try to tell you do, how to do your job. I'm not an educator, educator. Why would I do that? Um, you know, that's, that, that, that's not who I am. But I wanna go and I wanna say, um, like, what can I do to support you? You know, one of the things, uh, so I was a platoon commander in the Marines and then I was a company executive officer. And, and, and one of the things about that is like, you know, I, I was, I was supporting my squad leaders who were going out and, 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 uh, and, uh, you know, do, doing the hard work and doing the fighting, like. And so my question to them is, hey, I'm gonna tell you how to do your job. Is, because they, they, they've been trained and they know what they're doing. And we have a relationship where, um, you know, I can trust them. I'm gonna say, hey, what do you need to be more successful? And so we've gotta be able to say that to our parents is, where are we falling short? Where are we not giving you what you need and what can we do to build it back? And I think one of, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll give another example here, but, you know, just to kind of show that, that kind of lack in communication. But, you know, we've, we have started a school, uh, or we've, we've started a couple, really started a couple of different schools in the system over the last few years. And that's a hard process, you know, when you, when you're starting a new school, like, that, that's a, that's a big, big change and a big movement. And, um, when we've done that, we've had challenges, some of which are natural when you're trying to do that. Um, or a lot of which are natural when you're trying to do that, because you're moving kids from all over the city into one school building and maybe they're at an age where it just makes that naturally difficult. And so we've had challenges there, which are to be expected. And we've had challenges in staffing in some point. Well, we haven't been honest with the parents about that. To some extent, we haven't been honest with the community about that to say, hey, we're really struggling here, but we're gonna do this and we wanna hear, like, what do you need from us? Cause we've gotta make this successful. And you can't just, you know, if things are not going positively, you can't just say, oh, we're not gonna talk about that. Like, we're gonna talk about it. We're gonna, i- i- it's gonna be open. It's gonna be in the community. We're gonna talk about it and we wanna hear how we can deliver better.
What is your plan for improving services and support for students with special needs?
Yeah, so we, um, you know, we, our, eh, the, the system does a really nice job of this. Um, and there, there's a lot of, eh, you know, there's a lot of kind of federal and state-level things that play into this. Uh, but when you're a public school system, you're serving every kid. We'll serve them all. We'll do it. We'll do it wherever it takes. We'll get them the resources they need. We'll make sure they're taken care of. Um, you know, I grew up with, uh, one of my, one of my first cousins was, was special needs. Um, he had, had Down syndrome. And so I, um, you know, was able to see the atmosphere that he had when he was going to, going to school and how much love and, and, um, you know, energy that that brought him. And, man, that's a powerful thing, man. You know, um, I, I, I'm a, I'm a Christian, I'm a, I'm a believer. And, um, you know, we, we're, we're called to serve what we, I wouldn't consider, I wouldn't totally consider this, but what we would call the, the least of these, right? We're called to serve them. And we'll serve them as a school system, um, not just by mandate, but because we care and because we can.
What is your plan to address the condition of school facilities, including maintenance and upgrades?
Yeah, so they, you know, there, there's a lot of, a lot of maintenance upgrades that are, that are going on right now. There's a lot of maintenance upgrades that have gone on. Um, you know, over the last few years. We'll continue to do those things. We'll continue to make sure that our schools are, are, are in a place to where, you know, they look nice, they feel nice. Kids feel like, you know, parents feel like, hey, I'm, I'm dropping my kid off at a place that cares about them. I think if you wanna make a more strategic conversation about that, you know, you do have to talk, talk about the way that our, um, that our school system meets the footprint of the city. Our, our, our city has grown tremendously in my district and District Five and in District Six over the last several years. And, you know, if you think about just the footprint of the schools, it doesn't necessarily reflect that. And so we need to really be cognizant. It starts now, by the way. This isn't something that you can kind of come to in, in two years and say, oh, man, we've had a lot of families move out here and we've got a couple of different schools, um, that are overcrowded. Well, we might need to build a new school. Now, we gotta have that conversation now. And we've gotta be a part of the connection, connection with the city to say, hey, where are we prioritizing growth at the city level? We should be pri- prioritizing it everywhere, by the way. But, you know, where do we, where do we see this growth coming in the city in terms of population so that we can, we can work our plan and be a part of those conversations to say, okay, this neighborhood, these neighborhoods are coming online in 2027. That's gonna be, you know, they're building 50 houses out there. They're gonna have, you know, that's 100 kids. Okay, we gotta do something about that, because we ain't got the capacity to hold them. So we've gotta have those strategic conversations about that. Um, you know, really in the, in the near term.
How do you plan to ensure that schools have access to the technology and tools needed to enhance learning? How do you plan to ensure that schools have access to the technology and tools needed to enhance learning?
Yeah, I mean, we've, you know, like, we've, we have, you, do you use ChatGPT?
Sometimes.
Yeah, I use, I use a lot, I use a lot.
Every now and then.
Yeah, I use a lot. And so, uh, you know, we've got like, there's been so many technological advancements over the last, really, if you talk about like AI and language and learning models, I mean, really, over the last like two years, um, that's just extraordinary, I mean, extraordinary stuff, extraordinary tools. Some of that's actually a little bit, um, harmful to learning, I would say. You know, I have seen some studies that are out there that are like, you know, using, using ChatGPT, it's on, like, actually decreases your brain activity, so on and so forth. Because you're not putting that like critical thought into a lot of things. Um, but there is a role that those types of resources will play in education. They will play a role in allowing us to do, um, kind of, uh, more remote tutoring things or additional help for kids. Like, there's gonna be things that, that are coming online and will continue to come online in this space that will be educational-focused, that are taking a lot of those technological innovations, um, and kind of putting them into this fear where a child can be a part of it, see it, touch it, feel it, it helps them learn. And we've got to continue to do that. And so, you know, if you talk about STEM programs, um, all those types of things that really build that critical thought and build a schools, uh, build a skill set, um, that is really, really, um, strong. We've got to continue to invest in those things, but we've, we've, you know, we can't be, even at the system level too, quite honestly. Um, you know, uh, I don't know what other questions we'll have, but we'll, you know, I can give some thoughts on some ways that we need the technological innovation at the system level too, in the way that we communicate with, with families and communicate with the community, that I think would be really valuable for us. But to kind of, you know, close out the question, I think that a key piece of it here is that, you know, we can't have our head in the sand, we can't be Mennonites. Um, the Mennonites were the ones who, you know, they would destroy factories and stuff, um, during the, the Industrial Revolution. We can't be that, we've got to say, hey, these technologies are coming, how can we use those for our system? How can we use those for specific areas of need in our system? And, um, you know, if we have the funding to do it, let's invest in them.
How will you ensure transparency in the decision-making process of the Board of Education?
This is a great question. Um, this, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit, I'm gonna tie in that last question when you talk about technological innovation. I work in finance, and if you read, if you kind of observe the monthly financial reports that come from, um, the school system, I mean, they're, they're not understandable to someone who's not very well-versed in that platform and, um, you know, kind of educational background. When you don't have financial transparency, man, it leaves a lot of room to go make accusations, you know? Um, and, and we've seen that in our community, I mean, you see, you see accusations like that. And I, I support being the most transparent this board has ever been. If we're putting financials in front of people where they can get them, you're gonna be able to understand it. We don't need, it shouldn't be a, you know, we, I, we, I, I shouldn't campaign on, hey, I can understand those financials. It should be, I, I'm, I wanna make it so I can understand them and you can understand them, so that we're being transparent about that. I think the other thing is, you know, using our board meetings to hear the voices of the community, to continue to, to, to encourage people to come and share their thoughts and perspectives and to be a part of those. Maybe we do board meetings sometimes, not at Central Office, I don't know. Maybe we do them at different schools, we hop around the district, we get parents to do it. Maybe we do them at a different time of day, what's more advantageous for parents, so that people and community members, so that they can come and be a part of it, and so we have that. I mean, one of the, you know, we, we, i- i- if you go to a school board meeting at Central Office, I mean, you know, it's in the old auditorium of Honeysuckle, and I would, I would estimate that it's probably, you know, ten to fifteen percent full sometimes. We gotta get more faces in the room, we gotta get more people in front of it. And so, you know, if we're transparent about that, I think the other thing is kind of, you know, just being able to better share a lot of things that we talk about. I mean, if you, you know, if you go and kind of look at the board meeting and the board calendar, you, you know, you see a lot of agenda stuff and different things. You can see the topics that are being talked about. Um, but let's not just do what's required, let's, let's go beyond that and say, hey, here, here's the nuts and bolts that are going into that. You know, one of the things, uh, you know, I think, um, I, I'll give a good example to that. But one of the things that, that, that is done whenever we've made, you know, big school decisions. Um, so when they consolidated the schools, they did this, when we, um, launched the sixth-grade academy, we did this. In terms of going around and getting community feedback, we should make that a part of the, the battle rhythm for the, for the system. Just to say, hey, your school board members are going to be in front of you in a way that you can see, touch, and feel them. Because not everybody can get over to Honeysuckle, you know, not everybody can go do that at, at five thirty. So like, where and when do we need to be for you to be able to share your thoughts with us? We've got to be creative about that.
What steps will you take to ensure that the board is accountable to the public and that its actions align with the best interest of students in the community?
Yeah, I think it starts with, um, you know, uh, of a lot of the kind of transparency things to build that trust. I, I think that's a key piece of it. But, you know, the way I view leadership is, and this is the way I viewed it when I was in the Marines, and this is the way I viewed it, you know, kind of in my life and, and played sports and all that, is like, I'm a servant leader at heart, right? I can't do this all by myself, I don't wanna do this all by myself. I don't wanna do this with three other people, I don't wanna do it for, uh, other people, I wanna do it with everybody. Like, I wanna listen to you, I wanna hear what's on, on your heart. I, I won't be able to fix everything, like, that's just, that's a part of it. We won't be able to fix everything, we won't be able to make everything. Um, you know, one of the old Marine recruiting slogans is, uh, you're not promised a rose garden. Right? We can't promise a rose garden, can't do that. And if anyone tells you that, then they're not being truthful. But what we can do is, we can listen. We can know that we don't have the answers, and I know I don't have the answers to a lot of this stuff. But we've got a lot of people in this system who have a lot of experience. We've got families who care deeply about their children. We've got churches and businesses who care about this community. And so, um, you know, uh, there's, there's a great saying that I heard from, uh, from one of my old, uh, old bosses in the Marine Corps was, never pass up an opportunity and keep your mouth shut. All right, so some, there's, there's time to talk and there's time to listen. And sometimes, uh, you know, I think it would do our board a lot of good to say, hey, we don't have the answer here, we wanna hear what you, what you think. Um, and what, what the things, uh, what, what are the biggest challenges that you feel? And, um, you know, I think if we can do that, we can, we can have a lot of success, and we can have a lot of empathy and, uh, you know, deliver it in that way.
How do you plan to handle conflicts of interest or disagreements within the board? And how will you maintain professionalism and focus on student success?
Yeah, I mean, this is one of the more frustrating things is, you know, it, there, there, there has been a, a lack of professionalism. Um, you know, really for the past two or three years on, on the board. I mean, uh, that's just, it, it has been. And there's, that goes both ways, I'm not picking a side a- at all when I say that. Um, but we're better than that, man, we are, we're, we're better than that. We can get in a room and trust that every member of that board is coming there in good faith and have disagreements and come to a compromise and a resolution and go forward as one team. Like, we, we can do that. Um, I think if you talk about conflicts of interest, we've got to be clear to the wall. I don't, I don't want, I, I don't want con- conflicts of interest for myself, and I wouldn't even want the idea of that being elsewhere. And so, you know, there, there's, there's specific legal mechanisms and requirements to enforce that, and we'll enforce that. But I think if you talk about like board cohesion and collaboration, you know, one of the, one of the things is, uh, I, I was talking a little bit earlier about how, you know, previously the system was, you know, largely like divided in terms of, you know, the way that, kind of district representation. The reality is that we don't have that now, because we have, you know, kids from every district that are going to some of the same schools. So we should be more collaborative, we should be more cohesive when we talk about those things. And, you know, my thing is like, I will talk to anybody, like, I will. Uh, like, I, you can love me, you can hate me, it doesn't matter, like, I wanna hear from you. And I'm not gonna hold hard feelings about it, because particularly, um, you know, particularly in this case, because if someone's talking to you, it's because they care, it's because they care about the system. And the more voices we have at the table, that's people that care. And whether they agree with us or don't agree with us or whatever, like, we should all be able to be persuaded and be able to listen, and it would do us a lot of good. It would do us a lot of good to do that, uh, as board members with our constituents and as board members ourselves.
Why are you running for the position of a board member? And what personal or professional experience have prepared you for the role?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question. So, uh, I have two little girls. I have my, my oldest is, uh, three years old, and my youngest is ten months old. And they're gonna grow up in the system. Um, you know, we, we are fully planning and, and one hundred percent into putting them in Dothan City Schools, and so they'll be in the system soon. And, um, you know, it would be within my term and, and, and for the long run. And so, you know, I want them to have the best opportunities they have, but not just them, I want all of our kids to have those opportunities. And the second thing is, you know, I talked a little bit earlier about my kind of Marine Corps experience. But, you know, if you think about the Marine Corps as, um, you know, it's often called a cross-section of society. And it is, for the reasons I was talking about. I mean, you know, I, I just had, I was so blessed and fortunate to serve with, um, you know, with, with Marines from all over, right? Um, who were, who were and are capable and, um, you know, able to achieve so many great things. And that was a key piece of it. The only other place outside of the US military that does that at scale is public education. Because it's for everybody, it's for our community, we can all come together, we can all come to the same table, we can all go in the same schools. And we can have that here, there's so much value in that, there's so much value in bringing that diversity together and working together and learning from each other and the value that each other has. And, um, you know, there, there's so much value in that, and you see that in public education. And I think if you talk about my experience, so, you know, I, I'll, I'll share, you know, two seconds about myself. But, um, I, you know, served, served in the Marine Corps. Um, I, I got my MBA from the University of Georgia, I had an undergrad degree from the University of Alabama. You know, I've worked in kind of, I've worked in strategic roles for a consulting firm, I work in finance and investments, um, for, for a, um, you know, a industry-leading company that's in our area. And, you know, I have, I've been a part, I've been a leader in a lot of different cases. I've been, um, part of a team in a lot of different cases. And I know how to, you know, I, I feel very comfortable in my ability to critically think about problems, to critically think about challenges, to not come to the table and say, oh, I have the solution to this, but to say, hey, I have a thought, what's your thought? Uh, how, how can, how can we marry these two things and deliver the best thing? You know, I'm very focused on, um, I don't wanna see like, I, I don't just wanna see a plan, I wanna see a plan and then how that plan delivers. So if we say that a program that we're gonna do or a new action that we're gonna take at the board level is gonna be successful, we're gonna track that and we're gonna show it. And we're gonna say, hey, we're not do, this, this isn't doing what we thought it was gonna do. And so we've got to talk about, okay, will we continue to fund it, will we continue to invest in that? What else can we do, how else can we make that successful? We've got to be able to do those things on the follow-through. And, um, and so just by nature, I've had a lot of experience in those things. I will add real quick, and I don't want to bleed this question out, but this is something I get asked a lot. And, um, I'll, I'll just be forthright about it, but, um, or get asked quite a bit, is I graduated from a local private school in Dothan. Um, that's, that's where I went to high school. And, but I was born and raised in Ozark, and so I spent about half my, half my educational career between, um, public schools and private schools, and at every different level. I was in a private school and, and a public school across elementary, across middle school, and across high school. And so, you know, I've had the opportunity to see both sides of that thing. And I know that there's so much value in public education, there's so much value in the relationships that are made, made there. And we have so many quality kids in this city and quality teachers in this city, in our public school system, that we can support them and we can deliver for them, period.
How will your leadership style and approach contribute to the overall success of Dothan City Schools?
Yeah, well, like I said, I, I believe in servant leadership, like, I'm not gonna have all the answers, I don't wanna have all the answers. I wanna, I wanna, I wanna hear from our community, I wanna be a part of the schools, I wanna go to our schools, um, not just the schools in this, not, not just, you know, the schools in, in District Five or that service specifically District Five kids, but all the schools. And again, it's not to come and say, hey, you should be doing this, or you should be doing that, it's just to say, hey, what do you need? How, how are things going? How can we, as a board, how can we, as a system, better serve you? And to do the same thing with our parents. And so when there are, you know, making yourself visible, go into those PTO events, go into those, those, um, you know, open houses, those things like that where parents are gonna be and saying, hey, I'm here and I'm here to listen. If there's something you're concerned about, if there's something that you're worried about, I wanna hear it, may not be able to fix it, we may not be able to fix it as a board, but I wanna hear it. And then I think if you talk about just the board dynamics in general, you know, I'm, uh, I'm, I am comfortable with having those, those disagreements. Like, I'm comfortable with not everybody agreeing with, with my viewpoint, or not everyone agreeing with a certain viewpoint. Um, and I'm also confident enough to go and say, hey, let's talk about this, let's come to a compromise. You know, one of the things I think that, um, i- i- is rather interesting, if you look at it, is, you know, we've had a lot of big decisions in the school system over the last few years. And there's a tendency to kind of pin those decisions on the superintendent. And the superintendent's one component of it, but the board is the one who makes policy. The superintendent makes a recommendation and the board votes on it. And so there's a lot of compromise that can happen in that. The board has the option to say, hey, we're not gonna bring this for a vote, because we don't like it, take it back. Or, um, you know, and so there, there's a lot of compromise that can happen in that relationship. But it starts with having a good relationship with the superintendent and believing in them and supporting them and saying, hey, we may have done these one, two, three things that weren't as successful as we thought, but we're still on the same team, we can still support one another, we can still be friends, and we can still make this successful. It's not, hey, we've burned this bridge forever and there's no coming back from it. And so we've, we've got to be able to have those relationships and be able to have those compromises where, you know, we're not just, we're not just giving carte blanche to the superintendent, and we're also not being totally, um, you know, antagonistic to it, but we're being supportive and we're being collaborative. And we're both having the, the opinions heard, um, and, you know, we're representing our constituents in the best way.
Well, thank you so much for coming in, JT, and good luck with your election.
Thanks, Caitlin, I appreciate it very much, thank you so much.
Thank you.